All right, county commissioners are now in session talking about budget. And Christie?
So we can either start going through the clerk's recommendation and we can show you the changes we made.
Okay.
Make sure the board's in the grants and then that might give Kyle some time to get here.
Okay.
Or we can review that with Adam.
Is there anything that these two wanted to bring up?
Are you talking changes to the clerk's recommendation from when you gave us this?
No, from the departments. I just didn't.
Okay.
We went so high level that I didn't know if you wanted to go through and we can point out some of the changes or if you guys had had time to go through it. Usually we do a little bit bigger dive into.
Bigger than this sheet that you gave us the first time.
Yeah.
Okay, let's just, let's go ahead and do that.
Do that, okay.
So just make sure I'm clear on what we're doing. You're gonna talk about changes to the clerk's recommendation that we got?
No, changes from the department request to the clerk's recommendation, just in a little bit more detail.
Oh.
Rather than just the big highlight.
So we're still at the clerk's recommendation?
Yes.
We're just gonna say how we got there?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Just for transparency and.
Yep.
So on all salaries countywide, we did the 3% increase and got the salary table to a step five from the 10. So that placed people and then gave the COLA and then there was the one grade adjustment for a judicial assistant and then we have the prosecuting attorney changes that all go through as we hit those pages. But big picture wise, it was basically the scale change and the 3%.
So while we're right there talking about that, so on page nine. Christie, I was a little confused.
Yes, and when I get to this department, I'll show it too.
Okay.
So we took that to be, right now between clerk of the court and district court, those cover all court functions. But what we wanted to do was be a little bit more clear in what's in clerk of the court. That's basically gonna be bonds and fines court records. And then in district court is where we have the judicial assistants. And so that's why there were some changes on clerk of the court is we moved two employees that were judicial assistants to district court and one employee that was a senior management assistant from district court to clerk of the court. So now we've got some consistency in who's funded where.
But that wasn't where my question was.
Oh.
Because right here it says 3% COLA and appropriate step increases not included.
Okay.
And then it didn't look like there was included in the clerk's recommendation either.
That's in the, that's in the department.
Request.
That should be the department request, so we need to just take that, that, because that.
Will note out.
Yeah, or make it so it stays in the column of the department request. So it's clear that it's the department request.
Okay.
Because these salaries should include the 3% and the moving to the five.
Okay.
So it's just that.
The title and what I could see there didn't match and I wanted to make sure that we was, had included it.
Yes, we did.
I know we.
We didn't, we didn't pick them out and not give them raises.
Okay.
You should have. Just kidding.
Okay.
Okay, so the clerk's budget, there was a small increase. I don't even remember now what we changed in here, but there's a small increase from clerk's recommendation. Oh, it was, the clerk's office asked for that texting, no, what is it?
Fraud alert system.
That, the fraud alert system for $8,300. So that was the change. And that was discussed during that meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And then the assessors, the only item taken out of there was the $750 for polo shirts for DMV. And that was pretty consistent unless it was considered a uniform or safety, those dollars were removed countywide. No changes to treasures. Did I start to go too fast? Just hold around. Commission budget, we added $3,000 to give the incoming commissioner the same travel and education as you two.
Fuel cost.
So that was the same. The coroner, we added a little bit of money in operating for, what did we add? Oh, sorry, we took out $10,000 for the leases that were paid off. So that was the only reduction to that department.
But we included another vehicle.
Because that, he forgot to include it in his request.
And the $300,000 for exam room.
Yes, we left that from the department request. But yes, he had forgotten to add the vehicle. Clerk of the court, we made the salary changes that I mentioned and we added some retirement payouts because we have some potentials. That was another thing that we went through the clerk's recommendation and if there were some departments that may have retirees upcoming that the department didn't ask for the retirement, we included it just so the department wouldn't be set for failure. County operations, we did the raises. I did add retirement payouts for two potential employees. I don't know that they would go, but again, didn't want you guys to be behind in case they chose to. And then we did make some changes, some of these we talked about through the department meeting. We adjusted the training library, put $20,000 into HR and then we moved $10,000 into the education line for countywide staff development is what we labeled that. And then there were some small reductions. I adjusted the IAC dues for what the actual costs are gonna be in. And animal control, we adjusted up for usage. That's it on that. I did adjust the juvenile detention because that's gonna come in higher potentially, so I wanna make sure there's plenty of funds there. The event center contribution, that was able to be reduced. That's in your highlight letter, but that does show a reduction for the event center and then we added $15,000 for the July 4th event. Since that, sponsorships aren't coming in as we anticipated. Through PIO and purchasing, we did a few adjustments based on usage. And then same thing with the, nope, not with the emergency management, just PIO. There were some higher amounts than what we needed on like operating supplies, stuff like that. Any questions on any of those? Oh, and we added the vehicle, vehicles for your department. What? Any questions?
Nope.
Grounds and maintenance, we shifted out of building repairs, the $120,000 and moved that into special projects so that we can differentiate what is actual building maintenance costs versus if we do any remodel projects, that's what the $120,000 would be for. So that, and we can set that up pending how you want. We can tell Daniel that he needs to approve those so that we can track them better. If it meets certain criteria, that may not be a bad idea so that you know what projects are being done. He can probably include those in his updates.
Updates.
And then we took out again the leases. A lot of departments didn't realize their leases had been paid off, so we took those out for those departments that didn't have it. I did move out the mowing contract for the jail because that was in the jail's budget. So we left it in there, but out of here.
We do this landscape, never did name mowing.
That's right.
Exactly.
That's what we talked about too.
Till we know if it's gonna be a go or not.
Yeah, we said, didn't, cuz he's working on that right now, trying to find somebody, right?
Yeah.
So if they do that this year, we can take it out last minute.
Yeah, we could.
How much was that again?
Twenty.
Twenty.
And then we did move, move some capital acquisitions, no we didn't. Okay, so grounds of maintenance contingency, we left alone. Ag extension, we left, we left that. We did reduce the retirement a little bit, just simply because it was gonna be as much as originally projected when we started budgeting for that. Computers, we added the salaries as discussed. And we moved from capital, the VMware post replacement, moved that into property acquisitions from capital. So it's still in there, just in a different spot. Juvenile probation, I do have a couple of changes in here that resulted in the 3% on the county one. The on-call pay needs to adjust to $5,341. And that's based on the salary changes that we made. Matt put a spreadsheet together to tell me how much that would be. And then on the next page, the JCA program, the retirement will go to $1392 instead of And on the tobacco program, it will go to $6,419. I just, because the 3% was last minute, I just threw a 3% to his requested amount, knowing it wasn't gonna be 100%, but getting us pretty close. So if those changes are okay, we'll make those. No changes that were not discussed in HR's budget meeting. We had talked about that $20,000. And that's all the operating costs that were made, changed. Oh, $545 for dues. That was in the clerk's recommendation as well. Planning and zoning, we added the 10th code enforcement officer. And then as far as operating, there are a few items that were based on usage, we reduced. And there's the truck replacement that they asked for, stays in there. Next few pages don't apply because they're blank now, but we can't get rid of them because there's activity. So we're at adult probation. We are almost road bridge, so timing's perfect. We did take out the vehicles because those were paid off, adult probation, so that's the change there. GIS, we did some adjustments based on usage and reduced that budget just a little bit. And then boom, road bridge. Any questions on any of those pages?
What pages are in bridge?
Now we're on page 29.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, yeah.
Thanks.
You got here pretty quick. You don't know about the meeting, so.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't.
You actually got here pretty fast. You were down.
I was in the, yeah, I was in down. Yeah, I, I was just told that I needed help with something, that it was Monday or Tuesday maybe and they'd get ahold of me, so I didn't have nothing.
Okay.
Never mind.
Have you guys had any conversations?
Yeah.
So everybody should have, did you bring copies?
Of what you sent?
Yeah.
I have a copy. He doesn't even know why he's here.
I got a copy of what you sent him.
Okay, does anybody else need a copy?
This is the email that she sent.
Okay.
I'll just share with him.
Okay. I didn't CC you. I'll share with you.
You want me to go make some copies in court, please?
No. No, it's okay, you can just explain.
Jeff's got it on the computer here.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what we were looking at doing is, I guess from our group for compensation group, found that our operators were quite ways below. What we're looking at doing is changing the pay grades on our operators to ones, twos and threes. This would be, right now they're at eights and nine pay grades. This would change it to, operator without a CDL would be a nine, an operate, and which would be an operator one. An operator two would be a 10 and an operator three would be an 11. This would, as Christie put on there, this would increase extra on top of what the increase that the commission is looking at doing already for road and bridge, $73,000. Landfill, $46,000 and noxious weed, $5,600.
That does not include the temporaries.
And that does not include the temporaries.
On that note, we do have, so what Jason can hand out is during our compensation meeting, some departments took the information and personalized it to them. So like Buddy was in the meeting, so he was able to take that information and do this comparison and analysis. And then what I did is I took positions that I knew were 100% comparable and did the same comparison countywide so that the group could see all employees, not just a portion of the employees. So as you can see, we have some departments, or some positions that are 10% under market all the way to, I think the highest is 25.79.
27.3.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
The number I came up with, the equipment operators was 13% and 19%, which there's 9%, 7% between some grades and 9% between other grades. Once you get a 14, it's 9%. So the discussion needs to be had, are we gonna look at any position that is basically 19% under market or are we going to pick departments and do some this year and others in the future? If we do the equipment operators, there's a couple things to keep in mind. If we do the road bridge operators, we need to do landfill operators, the noxious weed operators and do we need to look at the event center? The other thing we need to look at within those categories is if we make some of these changes, just within the road and bridge department, you're gonna have your lowest paid individual is a grade six as a senior admin assistant. The next highest is a grade nine, which is you're purchasing an inventory coordinator. Then you have a handful of equipment operators and mechanics at tens, elevens and twelves, but your assistant operations managers are twelves. So your senior equipment, or equipment operator three is one grade below your assistant manager. And then your operations manager is a grade 14. So you're getting a pretty good compression at the top, which means next year, my guess is we're gonna have management coming in saying we're not making enough money or the equipment operators, why would you promote up to a lead position or manager position if it's only a grade difference? I'm not gonna deal with a headache. So words of caution, if we go two grades, maybe the better solution is to do one grade.
Well, you guys have been meeting. What's, what's the recommendation from your group?
We essentially identified what we felt were the two hotspots, which the attorneys, we've talked about that, and then these operators at road and bridge and landfill, those were the two that we felt were the hotspots that we wanted to address this year. And we talked about doing a three-year plan and Christie brought up that 19%. That was kind of, we thought about, as we look at a three-year plan to bring all the salaries in, in the line, it was based on the scale that she just discussed in here. So that's kinda, well, that is, was the recommendation if possible, take care of those two hotspots. What are the two again? The attorneys?
Yep.
The prosecutors and.
Okay.
The operator, the operators.
And included with the operators is the event center.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'll throw in on top of that, what my perspective, in the direction I gave Christie was largely this, looking at these percentages, the ones that were high up there, and then looking at recruitment and vacancies. So if a department is having trouble recruiting, not getting applicants, that was a red flag for me personally. And if they're down positions, that was the other for me, red flag. So there's lots of departments that if you look at the percentages, they're down and yet recruitment, there's, there's not big holes, we have bodies, but there's, there's a lot of departments that are down. So it's hard to pick and choose which ones. I feel, I feel like in the recommendation that I had Christie put together, essentially, we don't know, people don't know exactly where they're going to land yet with going to the five step and with the 3% COLA. And there are some people that are gonna get quite a substantial amount of money increase this year. I just don't feel like we can fix everything in one whack. It's a progressive, consistent increases where they need to be and in general across the board, cuz we're low across the board, so.
And that was the, again, just the, the compensation group didn't want to fix everything at once.
Right, yeah, absolutely, yep.
So talk to me about the 19% and where, what your goal was there.
Well, really, we, we didn't address this that I just gave you. We were more trying to figure out the positions that were bleeding like the attorneys. And then the scale was again the priority. I was only bringing up if, if we're gonna address equipment operators because they're 19% under market, well then why aren't we gonna address some of these other positions that are?
Higher than that.
19% or more.
I mean, we have all the way to 27%, 25%.
And so, well, the, the ask is valid. There's other departments that are being quiet and know that we're going to address bigger picture next year and so they've opted not to come in or they weren't part of the compensation group and don't have this information.
Does that make sense to you, Kyle?
Yeah.
Like, I mean, I don't wanna make it sound like we're against any one department, but there, there are a lot of departments, if you look at, if each department head is looking just at their department, and I've talked to most all of them over the course of this year's process, if you take a snapshot of that department and then look at the percentage and it's like, oh, well, yeah, if we're 25% under or we're even 15 or 16% under, then we should get an increase. But when you look at the whole list, there's a lot of departments. And I think as I've talked with people, they really pretty much, they understand that it is a countywide issue, we need to be more consistent in, in step increases, COLAs and, you know, we haven't been as consistent as we could be.
And a million.
I mean, we have for the last four or five years, we've been great, I think, bringing people up.
Tried.
And, but it's always just the next best option each year in, in fixing that scale.
So could I ask you a question?
Sure.
You mentioned talking about, yeah, there, there's severe compensation differences, but also some departments where you just cannot get the hires and you're, and you're, you don't have the personnel.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so you don't have the personnel you need now and you're having huge trouble finding them. Besides attorneys, on this list here, what other positions are in that category?
The sheriff's deputies.
When it says detention deputies or juvenile deputies or which ones?
Detention is adult.
And, and those are the ones where we're always short.
Is it just detention deputies?
Because they, they hire detention deputies first and then they.
Add them into patrol.
Yeah, they promote them up into patrol or detectives.
Tony's been down anywhere from 10 to, eight, 10 to, eight to 10 since he's been sheriff.
I was gonna look and see, I could probably tell you how many they had.
They got to 11 or 12 at one point.
But he, he's under a whole different jail that he's working on himself.
Yeah, and I'll give you an example of the contrary. If you were to look just at this piece of paper, it shows that some of my court deputies are 19% underpaid compared to their counterparts in these counties. However, we are going to interview for two positions tomorrow and we have internal applicants, how many internal applicants carry, like six or seven?
Seven.
And there were some that were external also and we'll probably, so it looks like we'll be able to hire internally, which is in our policy preference. But when I open up for those two positions that become vacant, that'll be opened up to inside, outside, wherever. And I have no doubt that even though on this piece of paper, we're 19% under, that we'll have multiple applications. And so we're not bleeding in the same way that those other two departments are bleeding with attorneys and jail deputies. But on this paper, it would look like we're one of the highest differentials.
Well, the other part that I, and I appreciate all the information and everything that we've done, but this doesn't tell the full story to me in our package that we offer, our insurance and our, you know, the benefit package and stuff like that. I mean, that's where I talk about, we've, we've had basically 40% increase in insurance in the last two years. And, and we haven't increased any employees payout.
Contribution.
At all, contribution. And so I appreciate all this, but I, sometimes I think we have to talk about the whole package too, of what we do for, for our employees. What I'd really like is for kinda your team to, to give us your recommendations, kinda just the plan for the next one, two, three years of where we're going so that as we look at all these, we, we evaluate everybody, the whole county. And, and it's true, I mean, I appreciate you as a, as a manager and you're looking out after your people and stuff, but, but our responsibility comes to everybody in the county and that's, that's why I appreciate Jeff putting together this salary group. But I'd like to have that goals and the direction of kinda where we're at.
Part of your, part of your request is to get the total compensation to be included in that?
Well, that's what I would, I would like to see so that we, when we're talking to our employees, we tell them, okay, this is what the county, but, but also for Jeff and their salary group, okay, here it is for, you're talking about this is what you want this year, well, what's, what's your goal then for next year and what's the plan for the next two to three years so that we know, I mean, we'll talk to the employees, okay, you're scheduled here and they're scheduled here and how do we?
Correct me if I'm wrong on this, Christie, cuz I'm going off my memory, cuz I was trying to find my notes, but we hadn't really set a specific priority, but we were looking at that ranking like you, we just talked about with percentages and I liked Jason's suggestion of hotspots and not for low applicants, holes and things. And put it, put the plan together that way, that's kinda what we've talked about. What am I missing?
The only other thing we were gonna do is I think we need to have, basically all this information needs to go to HR, to the department heads so that they can work with these counterparts and see if the jobs are comparable. Because if you look at some of these counties, for instance, the clerk is a great example. Some counties have a hodgepodge of they do auditing and recording or they do courts and elections or, so we really need the department heads and elected officials to meet with the counterparts and see which of these are comparable because some of them may not be. One of the counties with equipment operators, they don't have levels, actually too. Madison and Bonneville don't have tiered equipment operators. Well, we need to check with them and say why? What's the pro, what's the con? And then we're like, okay, take you out as an outlier because we don't like where you're going, but maybe we wanna utilize other people. But then we can get better comparables so that we know what the salaries we're looking at and then take the salaries play in the benefits as well so that we can say, okay, the average salary is $30 an hour, but you take the benefits into account, maybe we should be at 28 or something like that so that we're actually being comparable.
You know, on a sheet, on a simple sheet like this, I think that it might be beneficial just to, as we're talking about it, makes it easy to talk about, having each of these same counties that are on this list, how much is your employee contribution for benefits and what are your deductibles? Because they are greatly different. People think that just because it's eye crimp and just because it's a county somewhere else, that it must be the same and it's not.
Every county has the options, different options than jail plan.
Yeah, so that's something that I think we could put on here, just, you know, Bannet County is X amount per employee contribution and here are the deductibles, Bingham, Bonneville, Madison, because I guarantee you, we are the lowest and best, lowest contribution with best coverage in the state.
But we had kind of talked about turning that over and starting right, like this fall.
Right.
So that we'd actually be prepared.
Correct, and that's why this year we were focusing on just those two areas because we felt pretty comfortable that those were consistent job descriptions across everybody else. We knew those were hot areas, they're hard to get, we have holes, you know, maybe not as great as some other departments, but this is a little bit more specialized than some of the other departments. So that's why we focused on the two areas that we're talking about for this year because at least we would start the movement and it would be less for us to bite off next year when we tried to address some of the other issues and had a little bit more complete analysis of everybody.
That's where we were kind of with our, like our supervision sees that with the compression and stuff, but it's like you say, how do you do it all? You know, where do we start? We're not asking for us as supervisors to look at us first, we're trying to look at our front people and move in that direction. So they were all good and we're just, like Commissioner House says, we're just trying to find a place to start. One thing that we have is we're getting some people that maybe have the CDL, you know, and this is landfill and all of our operators, there's kind of that way. And then we have a big gap, we're having three years, so people retire this fall that are our most senior people. So what we're getting, that they're applying for these jobs right now are very limited in, they're truck drivers. And so we're going to have a gap here of not having any equipment. It's with the construction the way it is right now, to find equipment operators is next to nothing, so.
When was the last time you had to hire for an operator?
It was this, over this spring and it was, we were out four or five months, had it open and we got it hired. So we have, all of our positions are full right now.
How many applications did you get on that one position?
We had one with the CDL that we hired.
How many transfer from within the county?
We have, on the last two positions, we had one transfer and on our openings, we're, what we're kind of down to is looking to see if they have a CDL.
Has the landfill filled that position?
They've still got some vacancies.
So the one that came from the landfill to you guys, we still have a vacancy in the landfill because of, so, I mean, we haven't filled the position.
But it's.
In reality.
How many empty positions, just one in landfill?
Just one in landfill right now.
Yeah, we just have one right now. We had openings for quite a while before, you know, but we kind of are full right now. We have all our positions. I just, like I say, I'm kind of worried about as we have a lot that are going to be retiring from off.
The landfill position is posted currently?
We do not.
I don't know. I just did the salary.
So we have the opening.
I'm assuming it's posted.
Positions is posted?
I'm assuming.
The landfill position's posted.
I'm sorry?
The operator at the landfill, that position is posted.
And how long ago has it been posted?
I think it's been up for, they did some interviews, what, last week or week before? I didn't find a candidate that they were comfortable with, so.
Three months.
Been up for two months at least prior to that.
Do you know how many applicants they've got?
I don't, I know last round, I think about a year ago, they had twenty or twenty-four applicants, but.
So the thing they have right now is they can possibly hire without a CDL. And so that makes some of the applicants that they're looking at, there's more applicants but no skills. That's why ours get cut down to, we interview like two or three usually for our positions because we just go off of, we have to, for the trucks that they drag, we have to have a CDL. And so when we just put CDL as one of our cut factors, we get from ten or fifteen apps to two or three.
So when the board's ready to make a decision, I think there's two things you can think about is the first, if we go with this recommendation, that does create a little bit heavy at the top, which might mean more changes next year to management with an increased cost of one hundred and twenty-five thousand plus whatever the extra help change is going to be. The other option could be to do one grade, not two, so that we don't have the compression issues, relook at it next year and see if one, the one grade helped with also the three percent and whatever change moving the scale. Because even if you were at market, which there's a handful of Roden Bridge equipment operators out there that are at market, they got at least a one percent plus the three percent because of the scale change. So those are your two options, you could go one grade or keep with the recommendation.
His request was two grades?
Yes. But then you've got, like I said, the management compression, which we'll address, have to address next year.
This two grades is the one hundred and twenty-five K.
Yeah.
If it was one grade, what would it be, what would the cost be? Half that or?
I would guess half that, but.
That's a swag.
Seven percent.
Approximately.
Yeah. But I also need to take into account the extra help, we'll have to increase that. So the one twenty-five is not the final number.
The final number is.
They're about.
If you do the two grades, it's going to be more because we're going to have to increase the extra help request or cut back hours. And that's probably not.
So we have one in Roden Bridge.
I'm more worried about noxious mosquito.
Yeah, so that'd be about, is there around about ten thousand?
I would take it, I'd take it up seven percent. So if it's ten thousand, take it up seven thousand. Yeah, anyways, I'd take it up seven percent, seven hundred.
Yeah, seven hundred.
That was more than.
I was like, I'm from Marshall, but I don't know about seven thousand.
So that's about eighty-five hundred dollars, is what you're talking about or no?
For which?
For this one hundred and twenty-five K that they're asking for, I have to add another eighty-five hundred to that.
No, we probably need to add, how many extra help people we got?
Six.
Six, so.
Six times ten, another sixty thousand?
No, it shouldn't be that much.
Forty, just for our seasonal, you'd be like a forty-two, forty-five hundred?
Yeah, so maybe another ten with benefits. I figured that amount wasn't as significant as the top. So whatever you chose, I could just modify from there.
And with the one grade, it would be about five thousand.
For the extra help positions, yes. So, and what you can do is maybe take the center advisement with all the other ones we're going to have.
And that's what I was just going to bring up is, I don't want to make a decision right now because we have how many other departments coming in? And so as they come in and ask their request, I'd like to evaluate all of them for one go and see what kind of monies we're talking about so that.
Because at this point, any increase in a property tax, any increase in a property tax fund is going to require either a cut in operating or the use of property taxes. Now, if we do the landfill one, that one, we're going to have to cut some operating just simply because we're maxed out with the fees that we've budgeted to equal expenses.
On that note, you have this request for the additional money, do you have a suggestion about where that money could come from?
We could find it in B if we had to.
Which means paving fewer miles of roads.
Yeah, so that's about a mile, what we're looking at is about a mile of road paving.
One mile. And when you pave, well, let me finish this thought first. When you, I see you have a separate line for striping. Is striping dependent on actually paving or is that, sometimes you're doing striping even when there's no paving?
We're doing striping, yeah, we strip most of the roads every year.
Okay, but some of that striping would be because of the paving or no? Or does the paving include all that?
Most of the, yeah, we'd still have the same probably amount of, you know, we, it doubles up a little bit on the painting because if you chip or pave a road, you have to do it that year and the next year for sure because with that new asphalt and stuff, the paint comes off easier with the chips and stuff. So that does make a little bit more mileage.
So there would be a little bit that could come out of striping probably, is what you're saying, but not, but not a huge amount?
Yeah, not the full amount for this stuff, but.
And so that would fund the Roden Bridge, but we would have to find cuts in noxious and mosquito and they don't do paving, so we would have to cut in chemicals or in other programs. And in landfill, you would have to find an operating cut because again, their revenue is maxed and we can't use reserves.
How much is one mile of paving?
About a hundred and sixty. Hundred and sixty.
So that would cover more than this.
We could take a hundred and twenty thousand from Roden Bridge property taxes and give it to landfill or noxious and mosquito, but not landfill. So landfill would be the only outlier of someone not addressed. And then depending on if you want to address the event center, homeless complex, operators.
Well, like I say, I think, I think right now where I'm at is, we got to listen to the other groups come in and then evaluate each one of them and that's where I say, I appreciate you guys in this group that have been talking about salaries and what direction we're going and where we're at and kind of a little bit of a crystal ball look into the future of which departments. And I, like I say, I look at this and you have somebody that's twenty-seven percent market, I mean, that's pretty substantial. So there's just some areas that I think that, that we need to evaluate and if it ends up that we do a one percent or one step instead of two steps and stuff, I think that that's, with everything that's being thrown at us right now, that we need to evaluate that and we got a couple of days to look at that and talk to the other groups. That's kind of where I'm at right now.
I'm on the same page, I didn't want to make any decisions until we heard all the asks because I don't want to make this decision, make this decision, and then I'm kind of at my limit and then this last guy comes in and that's the most important one.
We just say, no, you're not going to do your roof this year. That's what happens.
He's the most important one?
That's what we did.
It's all who gets one there first, I guess.
You know.
Go first, be a good salesman, right?
No, and we appreciate everybody's work on it. One of the big things is the five, going and trying to do the five step and stuff like that. I think one of the things we've seen that hurts our guys a little bit is you get pretty close to start out pay, but then these other places are, they're moving them up a little bit quicker. And so that's how they're retaining them is because they work a couple of years and they're at their market and they're not going to leave where it's been taking us longer. So just even looking at that stuff's going to help.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Wish you want to give me a roof or?
Were you going with the B budget? Since you're here?
I didn't bring, I looked over the B budget and I didn't have any big concerns with the changes that were made.
Good, because we just added one cut, so.
Pick up your ball and go home fast.
So, yeah, unless there's something that you wanted to explain why or something, I, unless there's something besides what you put out to me before.
Nope.
No new stuff.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming, Kyle.
And on Kyle's budget, the only thing we increased was what we talked about when he came in for his department meeting, so that's why there was that increase. We increased for your contract labor, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So sheriff, we moved the officer that's at the event center into this budget from the event center's budget. So that was the only new position that really wasn't new, but changed position into this department.
And just on that, no, he's doing really well.
Good.
If you talk to somebody three times, then they trespass them off the property. But they have had major vandalism in the bottom bathroom again.
Uh-oh.
And so they closed it off and have a couple of portages down there. So, but everybody knows when he's there and when he isn't there and stuff, so it's still a little bit of a challenge.
Might need to do a circulating schedule because it is that so regular, they know you can't get away from, get away with anything.
Yeah.
On those work hours.
Anyway, that, it has been paused, the things that are going on there.
Let's see, so for operating, the only cut out expenses associated with that lieutenant position, correct? So that was the only change for the sheriff's B budget is that new position wasn't given to him. So we just took out that cost that we built in for that.
The owner's coming tomorrow, is that tomorrow?
Yes. And he's hoping that discussion will be a wash, what he's going to propose, but. Okay, prosecutors has a little bit more to it, we alluded to it when we talked at level, but we eliminated an admin position and one attorney position. They had requested eliminating two attorney positions and one admin, but they still have a caseload to deal with, so the thought was if we can get attorneys hired, have the money there in case so that they could break that caseload back up.
Question on that. How many attorneys are they down now?
One, two, three, four, five, I think.
Five down.
I think they're down five, am I right? So.
And one of those five we're eliminating?
Yes, yes, we eliminated the, am I right?
Yeah, I think four.
I know there's four, I can name the four.
The position we eliminated was a civil backup position. And so I guess we should go through this in more detail. So what we did is for the prosecutors, we adjusted the electeds and the chief deputies salaries. And then most positions received one grade increase with the exception of one position we just put on the scale because that individual had been off. And so that individual's now on the scale. And then we eliminated the position that was, that was vacated, it was just a senior deputy prosecuting attorney. And then the position that was backing up the civil attorney was adjusted to a grade, a senior deputy attorney. And then if they want to assign civil work to it, they could just throw a slash behind it and put civil, but it's at a grade eighteen. So our attorneys now start at a grade seventeen, seniors are eighteens. The assistant chief deputy prosecuting attorney that is also civil deputy is a nineteen, no, is a twenty from a nineteen and the assistant chief deputy is a nineteen. Does that make sense? So our civil is a twenty, our assistant chief deputy is a nineteen, and then we've got seniors at eighteens and entry levels at seventeens.
So just to make sure I'm clear on all this stuff, we were down five attorneys. We eliminated one, so now they're authorized four.
To refill.
If we eliminated one more, they would still need to fill three?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and then per the request, if you're down attorneys, you don't need the admin. And if you're down an attorney, then, and they were fine with the caseload change with the admins, so.
How many admins are we down?
None.
None?
No.
Okay.
Well, one, sorry, one. And that's the one we eliminated and that was somebody moved into the civil.
So admin is full.
Admin is full, yes.
And I'll just tell you, this is one of the areas that I'm a little concerned with. One is the pay rate, but two is. One is the pay rate, uh, but two is a whole new management. Doesn't matter who wins in the election, it's a whole new management and, and that worries me. And, and how the office is set up and, and stuff, so, I mean, we can do the very best that we can, but it's, it's something that is gonna be up in the air in January.
Well, even with braces, there's a shortage of attorneys. So.
And this is one that your groups talked about. Yeah, this was the number one need to fix.
And, and I've had a couple of conversations and this is the hope.
With what we've got here?
That you filled up those four spots?
Just, just like this. This, this recommendation is based a little bit on some conversations that I've had with people running that will be in charge of that office next year.
I've talked with one of them, but I told Brayden, I mean, they wanted to come in and talk. But we can't offer something to one candidate that we don't offer to the other candidate. It's gotta be a hundred percent equal as a county itself, so. If you had them conversations, I appreciate that.
There it is.
I, I'd go with what you, you're recommending here, but like I say, it's it's gonna be a tough one to get started.
I did talk to Matthew last week, I think it was, and, um, I think he had some other ideas on recruiting that maybe will help. Reaching out to some of the universities, I don't know if that's been done.
Uh, we had one employee that is a full-time attorney now. Okay.
Yeah, they, they started that last two years ago. Going up to U of I, down to Salt Lake a little bit too, so, but maybe they can go further, I don't know.
Okay.
He's, he's gonna hopefully try and get us.
Questions on this one then? Okay.
Um, we did cut the B budget just a little bit and that's for operating or usage and if we're gonna be down an attorney, then it's one less bar license, it's one less CPE, that kind of stuff. So those were the only, um, operating changes we made there. Uh, the jail, really no changes there other than the salary request was reduced similar to the sheriff's office because it was just a lot more than we felt would fund with everything else the county was doing. And then operating, we moved, uh, three hundred and fifteen for the generator to capital. So that's why it looks like there's a reduction in operating, but it's made up for in capital. So. Anything on jail? The ambulance contract, uh, we left the contract as requested. The only item cut out was the south ambulance staffing. Uh, there just wasn't enough cash to generate to be able to cover that. And I think we talked about that a little bit. District court, again, we moved a few employees around between district court and clerk of the court. So that's the increase there. And then, um, operating, we increased a couple of, let's see, mental hearings went up a little bit and that was all in their operating budget. Court marshals, those are law enforcement salaries that were adjusted. And then we rolled forward the security, just in case. Probably not enough money and we don't know if we'll get to it, but if we do, it's just roll forward reserves. Eastern Idaho Fair contribution, still eleven thousand. Fair maintenance, uh, we left that as requested. Fair exhibit, uh, we did take out the fourteen thousand for their events and moved that into the Bannet County Event Fund. So that all Bannet County events, we talked about that, are in, um, the Bannet County events. And then on the fair, we left that as requested. And for H, uh, we do have one minor adjustment on contract services for H. The money in contract services was two thousand sixty-five. They had to pay a portion of that out this fiscal year, so there's only thirteen hundred and sixty-six dollars available to spend. So we'll reduce that down just a little bit. Uh, one quick thing that we might want, I don't know if it falls in at this point, but, um, the fair buildings and ARPA, um, I think at some point we need to talk about that a little bit and timing. If we want to leave those projects in ARPA. And if we are, hopefully, the building for the office, the big building that we're gonna have for a million dollars, there's actually a little bit of money left over from the sheep barn. The sheep barn is only supposed to be about sixty-five thousand dollars. And we have budgeted, uh, four hundred, five hundred. We've spent about twenty almost on the footings and so that's gonna be around eighty-five thousand that will be spent out of that money. We can earmark the remaining amount to that million dollar project. But, um, it would be good to know through this budget process if that project's gonna be able to be complete or at least by con, in contract by December, so that.
It won't be complete, but it'll be in contract.
Okay, as long as we are in contract, okay.
And that's what I told them, the, the extra money that was towards the sheep barns will go towards the
Okay.
office building if we're, we're not ready and moving forward on the barns. So that there's, there's one point six million dollars for all those projects. And, and where the funds end up, we'll have to make those decisions.
Okay.
And that'll be a board of county commissioners' decision, not a fair board decision.
So as long as we're under contract, I just didn't know if we needed to do some quick last minute readjusting and do some switching with ARPA and projects and then throw the, if we needed to make a change, I just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah. And, and so the three projects right there, Sixth Street School and that, they're all flowing.
Okay.
And, so.
Okay, I, I.
See where we're at.
Had a.
In, in another month, we'll, we'll know a little more.
Okay.
The drawings should all be done for all of it and, and then we'll see where we're at. I'm putting out for bid.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to, if we were gonna, like I said, have to do any changes, we could add it to this budget and then make some tweaks, but if we're good, then let's keep our line.
Did city get a permit yet while it's going?
No, and I talked to Vlad Friday. By the way, Dave Martinez was hired by, that's who we chose on Friday to be the area or district six. But, uh, I brought it up with Vlad and Vlad says, well, I was wondering, how come you guys haven't been doing anything? He says, you should have called me three days after you filed that permit. And so I'm sending him an email today telling him where we're at. Dan sent me the steps that we've been going through. And so. Good.
Progressing. Um, health district is it was changed slightly, but I think that's just because we didn't have the right number for the department request. And so it's updated the historical. The clerk's recommendation was to keep it consistent with prior years with a slight increase, but not as dramatic as what they requested.
And they've asked.
They'll be here tomorrow.
Yeah.
Indigent, no changes to that request other than the salaries. Same thing with the direct assistance, that's kept the same. We were able to fund through indigent reserves and the little bit of money that comes in for reimbursements to keep the rent for the PD's building in here.
That's what I was gonna ask is.
Yeah. We can probably do that another year and then we might have to reload in twenty-six to move it to the general fund, but. College tuition's at forty thousand. We did end up funding that with some of the liquor money. Just because reserves are finally getting used down a little bit and the only other revenue source in there is sales tax. So, but that's more on the funding side that we may or may not care about. Event center, we took out the deputy and then we made the change that had already been made this fiscal year of getting rid of the field assistants and moving that money to extra help. And then, um, operating went up slightly, do you remember why? Utilities. Those utilities, it looks like. So that went up slightly and then, um, we added the website hosting for seventy-five hundred in there and then we added the vehicles for the fleet policy. Scott said thank you for the budget, by the way. Good on that?
Yeah. I just looked at ten thousand on movies in the park. Haven't seen anything advertised at all this year.
I don't know they did, that they did that this year, so that will just remain on, on this year and.
Triggered a thought in my head. I haven't seen any advertising.
Season's been a little busier than normal, I think. Um, appraisal. We just made the salary changes and made a few reductions, um, the clothing, we cut to four hundred. And Jason had a plan as opposed to having shirts for everybody for two thousand dollars, which just brought the money more in line with actual costs. And that was, and then we cut some education and training.
You was, last once I talked to you, you're looking at all the desks and stuff, how'd that discussion come out?
Turn that up.
Oh, yeah. Well, I, so GIS had asked for quite a bit of money for desks and when I was over actually getting a title, uh, over here, I talked with Candace about her new desks, which are beautiful and I went and pulled the receipts, thank you, and I didn't pull them. And, um, anyway, so found, I put in what they spent on those desks enough for, for three of them. So that's what, that's what that exact number.
Got the last one.
Yeah.
And I apologize, I forgot to highlight that when we ran through GIS.
Okay, but they have the, the same amount of money that Candace had for those desks and they're nice desks, so it should be fine.
Liability insurance, uh, that was again updated because we hadn't had the correct number yet for the court check or department proposal. Veterans, we took out the brick work just simply because it's already been done. Um, in fact, I got an email from the, Mandy got an email from the vendor that's doing that and they claim they'll be done by August first. That was news to Miguel, so he's following up, but, um, that should be done in the next few weeks. Noxious weed, uh, added a retirement payout for a potential that may or may not happen, but figured we wanted to have it since that's very limited staff. That could potentially increase if we make those grade adjustments for the department. And then, um, we adjusted the capital up for both vehicles that they wanted. And we took out the contract labor because they haven't used it. That was a funding decision.
Salary tables and stuff like that. When they come and talk to us, they talk about the new regulations, where everybody's gonna have to have a license and stuff. Is that included?
No.
Anywhere?
That's in the request that they brought, that Kyle just brought forward.
No.
Yeah, so that would need to be increased just a little bit if we make grade adjustments for the extra help. And for Nick. Mosquito. The extra help would need to be adjusted pending the grade change. And then we adjusted operating down just a little bit due to funding. Uh, this was one department we did not take the property tax increase on. Because we did take it in the county. So it was kind of a, try to bring them all down so that we weren't going up too much. Chemicals were taken down a little bit and then again, the professional fees hadn't been used for two years. So those were the things taken out. And then pill, we put five hundred thousand for the existing, uh, projects to adjust for cost, cost fluctuations. So if we have any overages on existing projects, that's what that money would be for. And then we put in historical societies.
Sorry, let me back up there a second. Five hundred thousand?
Yes.
Is set aside for cost overruns?
Yes. Because it's already anticipated the YDC building will come in higher. And, um, where we don't know on a handful of the other projects until they actually go to bid and we get bids in, um, some of the costs are just estimates, so. And if we don't need it, it won't be spent, um, it can roll into future year projects.
But that is pill.
It's pill, yes.
It is pill. And those are dollars, we've underestimated the dollars coming in for the last few years, so we've got good reserves sitting in there right now.
How much reserves do we have now?
A million and a half.
Really?
Yes. But those are one times. So you spend it, it's gone.
Hmm, okay. Cause our pill did comes about six hundred and some one thousand, isn't it?
It fluctuates.
Now it is, now it is. But in prior years, like Jason was alluding to, no.
Right.
It was, I mean, we've been as low as three hundred thousand.
Correct.
So, and then they threatened not to fund it. So it could go away.
So we have how much in reserves in pill?
I believe it's a million five. I can report back to that tomorrow.
This year pill doesn't seem to be on the chopping block as much as SRS does, which doesn't impact us quite as bad.
No, I just took that funding out of Roden Bridge.
Yeah.
But we didn't get that much for that.
Yeah, it's like thirty thousand, something like that.
Yeah, something like that.
What are, what are the restrictions on using pill?
No, one time.
It's just gotta be a one-time fund. You can't count on, you can't count on pill to do things like salaries. It needs to be project.
Project, a vehicle.
A vehicle.
So you could buy vehicles with this money, you could put a roof on a building with this money, stuff like that.
Yes.
We used to buy the sheriff's cars.
Definitely.
Okay.
And for historical, she requested thirty thousand? No, twenty-eight thousand for savers. We funded part of that out of the county centennial trust and the difference out of here. Um, we have money, it's from the books that we sell. So we used what was available in there with the difference in pill, so.
Um, let me ask another question, sorry. So next, you're saying next year you expect to get how much from pill?
I don't remember what I put, hang on. Usually I do around four hundred thousand.
Okay, I thought maybe that was that half a million you were talking about.
No, no, that's, I'm using reserves. So the one thing we do with pill is we anticipate, I hold a higher amount of reserve requirements in there because we don't get that money until June. So basically we're spending prior year monies when I budget pill. No, I did take pill up to five hundred thousand.
Okay.
Now, keep in mind, we do have a million twenty-four thousand of those reserves of the LATCF funds that were one-time additional monies that were associated with the regular pill allocation. And that I do have reporting requirements on, um, when you start spending that money. So we can do, next year, we can do a report of, say we spend the seven fifteen, we can say those are the funds we spend. Or it can be other pill. I figured that's next year's problem. So I'll address that.
I guess if it's within the criteria, maybe that would be good.
Yeah. And I don't know that there's restrictions on that spending. It's just I have to report how it's spent.
Right, right.
So probably the better thing to do would be report that sooner than later, so it's done, not additional reporting.
And that's a discussion that, that I'd like to have, not right now, but to finish off the building in Downey. So it's a completed project.
Well, if that's what we're gonna do, we need to add that budget authority this year.
I never thought about it till we just talked about it, so.
Well, now, that was where my original discussion with those fair buildings was at is what is it gonna be? If we're looking at more than the million four or million five that we've got, because if we don't tear down the buildings, that hundred thousand is available to put into the building. I don't know if the land issues have been worked out.
That's ours, that land. Not, not all of it in the park area, but where the buildings going, that's, that's ours, that's a hundred percent ours.
But I mean, to tear down those buildings, we've gotta have the land issues addressed correctly.
They're all resolved. Them are our buildings.
Right.
And it does, so if we tear them down, it's just up to us.
Okay.
Or if we decide to give them to the city at Downey, then we just tap right out.
Okay.
Something, but I've talked to Brian, and then I've also talked with Kyle. And actually, during the off kind of season, he could tear them down, take an excavator down there and haul them off. I mean, so the 100,000.
Do we need to worry about that not being a broken bridge function, tearing down buildings?
I didn't...
We could just go push one over.
Like I said, I talked to the director and he says...
Accidentally knocked it over.
Maybe if you would've hired one of those guys that didn't have a CD, I would've just racked a truck in there.
Well, we've got some employees that might just be...
Somebody in the corner is off.
So anyways, that can be additional...
I wasn't going there.
I didn't say a name.
That can be additional discussions, but those are, those are things we wanna do now.
Yeah.
But again, if those buildings aren't gonna be delivered or even be done until next budget process, we could budget for it in '26, too. So getting the shell might be the big step.
Just make sure I understand this. You've got, you said you had 1.5 million in pill?
I'm guestimating.
About, okay. And what's this, and this other million, this is another million dollars?
No, that's a part of that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I was thinking, man, if we sit here long enough, we'll have 15 million dollars.
I didn't just magically pull out 2.5 million dollars.
Sorry to hear that.
But we can discuss changing that. Snowmobile, no major changes there. Waterways, no changes there other than we need to get money spent this year.
Did Scott talk to you about the project you'd like to do with this year's money?
Yeah, I've heard about it, but we need to move on it.
Okay, well, was it okay?
What project was that?
Just kind of fine-tuning the stream that leads into the pond up there?
No, I thought you meant the thing about fixing the water.
Well, he talked about the dock. But then he talked about he wants to do some groundwork and make the current path of the stream that runs through the gulch that leads into the pond.
That's something I was thinking of.
Is for...
Probably need to have a waterways meeting and then just see which projects or if we can fit them all in.
Meet with Scott. Meet with Scott and get his projects, and then let's get them going. Because if our crews can't do it, then let's get it contracted out, and let's get them done.
That money needs expended by September 30, because I report on that in December or January. And if we don't spend it, we either give it to other counties or return it.
If we give it away, do they have to have it spent also by that September?
No, because it's expended by us. They don't report beyond that.
Okay.
So. Opioid, we have 250,000 budgeted for operating. And then I did have a line after the opioid meeting that we talked about to break out 25,000 of that and put it into an attorney's fee line. We can either add to this 250 or reduce it, if you have a preference. We've got at least 300 or 275 that we could budget.
And I just put the 25,000 in there. I mean, then we can utilize, otherwise we can't utilize.
And the 25, we wanna just keep and hold in case we've gotta pay that attorney firm. Juvenile detention, we just did the salary increases and then left operating the same other than adjusting the admin fee for the changes. Landfill, no new positions, which we may have a discussion on tomorrow.
There will be a discussion.
And then we added the shift differential of just under $17,000. And then operating, we added the scale house, $2 million for that project, and adjusted the admin fee.
The shift differential. Was that shift differential or on-call?
No, shift differential.
Okay, okay, I did want to clarify.
On-call's on the next department.
Okay.
So this is just for employees that work on Saturdays. If they are basically no management and not the management assistant. It's just for the scale house people and the operators. And then on the gas to energy, there's $150 a week for on-call. And then the admin fee was adjusted. And blower is in there as a just in case, so. And again, if we do salary adjustments in here or new positions, we'll have to find operating cuts.
So, or going back to the landfill, the scale?
Scale house, we put up 4 million. Some of this year's money will roll forward, and then the 2 million will roll forward and potentially some of the engineering costs will pay out this year.
So just a question. If we are planning or assuming that within the next three to five years, we'll add another engine up here, another motor, another generator, excuse me?
I didn't realize that was a discussion.
The gas.
At the gas plant. It's, it's just hypothetical at this moment. When would we start, could we start putting, and I'm not suggesting in this budget, but maybe for next year, can we put money in there for that, assuming that in three years, we're gonna add another generator?
You wouldn't have to budget for it, because it's an enterprise fund. You would just have to under-budget the amount of revenue that we anticipate getting. So right now, the amount of revenue we anticipate is... Right now, I have revenue anticipation of 7.8 million dollars. If we needed to start socking away, say, 100,000, then you would only be able to spend 7.7 of that. That's on your funding sheet. We could budget for it, if you wanna try and be clear. But the problem with that is they may cut into that budget authority of that line item because it's budgeted spending authority. So the better thing to do is just not spend the amount of revenue available. And I can do that through that funding spreadsheet and just put a negative in the reserves. But right now, they're spending every dollar they're getting.
Yeah.
So that will need to be a discussion, honestly, sooner than later, because that building is also gonna have to be built onto. There's only room for two generators in there.
Correct.
So it's gonna be a lot of additional costs.
It's more of a five-year discussion, but we just, after we went to Twin Falls and saw where they were at and where we're at, we're on track to match that in the next five-ish years.
And in theory, we should start seeing increased revenue from the second generator.
Correct.
I don't know that we are yet, but if that starts coming to fruition and it outweighs the costs to maintain it, that shouldn't be a problem. But if we're not at that point, then that could be a problem.
Okay, well, just a heads up for future.
911, there's a $500 adjustment, and that was just because the admin fee didn't come in as high as what we projected. Forensic pathology, we need to add whatever the cash balance is in here per quick discussion in an operating line, I believe, is what was requested, right?
That's correct.
Bennett County Events, the big highlight here is we had to do some reductions. It was asked to move the concerts to 5 million based on revenue. I could not do that. I cut concessions down to two and a quarter, and it's matching revenue. And then we had to take out the admin fee because it wouldn't come. So, and then we also reduced the 5 million by 16,000 and change.
That's the same thing we did with D6.
Yeah. But I was not...
Which is next.
I wasn't comfortable taking revenue up higher than, just to make it look...
I think that was a good call.
D6, we do have a minor change, and this came after I spoke with Jason Di, Judge Carnarole, and Ashley. They were good with these changes. They just needed to be able to explain them to the advisory board. But through the discussion, there's a vacant position, the senior admin billing position is gonna be vacated soon, if it's not already.
I think it is already, actually.
The current senior admin assistant that still works for us is gonna move to that billing position because she's taking over the billing, so it really wasn't fair to leave her in her current position and add duties. So we want to zero out position 104, 701 to zero, which is 38,000 and change. And then we're gonna add back the senior admin billing amount. So that those are following suit with the duties they're doing.
So if this is an advisory board, who do they advise to?
Jason could probably explain that a little bit better.
So all the judges and Matt Olson is on there. Usually, the public defender is on there. So I would guess that Dave will continue to sit on that. I sit on it. There's one commissioner.
Right.
Yep, and basically, what happens is Ashley talks about just where they're at, their caseload, and the, kind of the direction of the program. The judges talk about the numbers that they're seeing, and then Matt will talk about any recidivism. Dave will do the same.
So it's really not an advisory board, it's more of a...
It's a program board.
Yeah.
Okay. When you said advisory board, what do they advise to?
Review the program, direction, what they're doing, what they're seeing.
But I thought it was interesting that they met with you about our employee.
Well, that's not, that's not what the discussion originally was.
Right.
The original discussion was, you tell us we have $500,000 in cash, and then you tell us you have to cut our budget because you can't fund the positions, this, that, and the other. Well, if we increase counselors, then the money should flow, so why can't you just do that? And so we just had to, I had to explain to them, which Judge Carnarole was amazing, and said, "Well, just because you say you're gonna make money doesn't mean you do, so you can't anticipate this because of this." So it was just, tell us how we can explain this to them.
You gotta have the revenue before you get the expenditure.
Exactly, and so that was the explanation, and so they were good with it. The other item we're gonna do is for professional fees, it's budgeted at $7,500. They are good with us reducing that to try to net out the effect on bottom line so that the bottom line is as close to this budget as possible. So I'll figure out the salary amounts, and we'll get that figured out. So you won't see, hopefully, much of an effect, bottom line. The next few pages are grants until you get to page 91. And then on these projects, I just adjusted budgets for cash balances because most of these don't bring in revenue other than a couple of the problem-solving related trusts like domestic violence. Court monitoring comes in, but those aren't participation fees, those are ongoing. Juvenile workshop, so. The one that you might care the most about is Dan's capital acquisitions. That's slowly starting to spin down, so I think he may only have about 200,000. As we get closer to finalizing the budget, I might adjust that up if I think he's gonna have more money, just so that we can get that closed out this next fiscal year. And then those were one times, so that we won't budget for again. Good? Any questions on anything?
Good.
Jeff?
Lots of fun. John? I'm just, thank you. I mean, there's a lot that goes into this. Then we come in here and we throw five more things at you to think about. It is a process, but you do an excellent job. Thank you very much, your whole office.
Are you good with the on-call for juvenile probation and the forensic pathology and the D6? Can we go ahead and make those changes?
Yes. Bring up that, a motion on that, please.
Want to accept?
Have a motion on paper, say aye.
Aye.
We can get those done. The only property tax effect will be the minimal ones on juvenile probation, but...
So tomorrow, we made it 10.
We have historical, prosecutors, landfill, and assessor.
Okay, but do we have a public hearing that leaves that?
Right.
So, we have to go both sides of that or whatever.
I think she set us at 3?
3 o'clock. Just moved it. John had a meeting, and so we moved it back an hour or something.
So depending on how the morning goes, you can hear all of those if we have time after the public hearing, if you wanna make decisions or if there's any changes that any of the board wants to make. Then at 3 o'clock, we can meet again.
And then we're scheduled for Wednesday?
And depending on what changes you want, if we can put the numbers together, we can present it at 3. Or if we're not at that point yet, then we can present it on Wednesday. And then have maybe final, I don't know. So it's gonna depend on you guys, how many more meetings we have. I'm looking to know of you. Well, I know John's not gonna want any ads.
John's got what?
You're not gonna want any additions, probably.
Good call.
So I'm looking at you two.
It's, thank you. Like I said, it's a lot of work and a lot of thought goes into it. It's not just simple.
Yeah.
All right, with that being said, we are adjourned.